Good evening, everyone. Welcome you to the May 6, 2013 City Council meeting. First order of business is the roll call. Heidi?
Sasso. Clayton. Nordstrom. Scott. Peterson. Doyle. Lewis. Roberts. Wright. Laurenti. We have a quorum.
And now we have Ron McLaughlin from Hillsview Church to deliver our invocation. You are invited but not required to participate.
Thank you. Pray with me. Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this beautiful day you've given us. Lord, we praise you for being in control. God, I thank you for letting us live where we live. And, Lord, I thank you for the men and women on this council. And I thank you for their willingness to lead and their willingness to serve this community. Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom and understanding and discernment with everything you bring in front of them tonight. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Ron. We are now to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? We'll first go to Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you Mayor. If it would be permissible, I'd like to move item number 82 up to the beginning of the non-consent items so that our city employees don't have to sit in anticipation through the rest of the non-consent items before they get their decision.
Okay, so let's move that to prior to item 71.
Prior to 71, correct.
Now Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
The only reason that one's off of non-consent is because I pulled it to abstain, so it's not with the other three, or the other two, so I appreciate you moving it up.
Very good. Okay, so item 82 will be prior to item 71. Any other changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We now have several awards and recognitions, and if Jean and Bill Keslov could join me down front along with Word 5 Alderman Ron Sasso and Bonnie Peterson, our council president, was not able to join us tonight. Bonnie Peterson and Ron Sasso nominated Bill and Jean Keslov to be Citizens of the Month for May 2013. And Ron, if you could read the proclamation for Jean.
The May 2013 Citizen of the Month is an individual whose second career has been public service to the community. We are pleased to present this award to Jean Keslov. Jean moved to Rapid City from the eastern part of the state when she was three years old and is proud to lay roots firmly planted in South Dakota history. As a great-granddaughter of Dakota Territory pioneers, she realized at a very young age that the stories and people of the past helped form a community and its sense of place. Growing up in Rapid City, Jean saved her babysitting money for collectibles and antiques, so it was a natural progression for her to move on to bigger things later in life, such as a historic home. While she probably would have taken any old house upon returning to Rapid City in 1997, what she and her husband Bill found was a 1910 American four-square-type house in the West Boulevard Historic District. Her interest and involvement in restoring her own house led to serving on the Board of Rapid City Historic Preservation Commission. In 2007, Jean co-authored "Rapid City: Historic Downtown Architecture," a book in the "Images of America" series by Arcadia Press. In 2008, she served as a preservation consultant on the rehabilitation of the Windsor Block in downtown Rapid City and also served as a chairperson of the latest edition of the West Boulevard Historic District Tour Book. In 2009, as a member of the Rapid City Historic Preservation Committee, she attended preservation leadership training. And in 2010, co-wrote the National Register nomination for Rapid City High School. Jean is currently President of Historic Rapid City, formerly the Fegel House Preservation Foundation. Its current project is the restoration and rehabilitation of the VT McGillicuddy House, sorry. Thank you, Jean, for your dedication to the city of Rapid City. We are proud that you are a member of our community.
Whereas the city of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual whose second career has been public service to the community, and whereas the May Citizen of the Month is awarded to Jean Keslov, a resident of Rapid City. And whereas Jean's dedication to the West Boulevard Neighborhood Association in our community shows the generous donation of time she's given to better her neighborhood, community, and region. And whereas her commitment to help others shows true passion for Rapid City's community. And now we declare you as one of the two May 2013 Citizens of the Month. And I'll read the other one. The May 2013 Citizen of the Month is an individual whose second career has been public service to the community, and we are pleased to present this award to Bill Keslov. Bill's Excellent Adventure, that was a great movie, by the way. Bill and Ted, does anybody remember? Bill and Ted's Excellent Adventure. There was also Bill and Ted's Bogus Journey, too, so I don't know if anybody remembers that one.
Is that all in there?
No, I did, that's not in there. Bill's Excellent Adventure has taken him from the Golden State and to the land of infinite variety. Moving from his Lake County, California walnut farm to the banana belt of South Dakota, he says he has yet to even see one banana tree. His civic involvement in California made an easy transition for him to become involved in our community. From umpiring ASA softball to his appointment to the State Law Review Committee defining the preservation review process for South Dakota, his contributions here have been extensive. Along with homeownership in the West Boulevard Historic District came service on the Board of Directors and as President of the West Boulevard Neighborhood Association, followed by his work with Historic Preservation Commission where he chaired the Ordnance Committee. That in turn led to the development of a handbook, now in its final stages of review, that provides guidance to historic property owners in the historic district. This is Bill's 11th year as Secretary Treasurer of the Skyline Drive Preservation, Inc. This organization's fundraising efforts resulted in the acquisition of 150 acres of land that was gifted to our citizens for use as a wilderness park. He also serves as a board member for Historic Rapid City, working alongside his wife Jean on the McGillicuddy, did you notice I pronounced that right? He was a mayor, too, and nobody can pronounce his name either, or mine. McGillicuddy House Project. Thank you, Bill, for your dedication to the city of Rapid City. We are proud that you are a member of our community.
One of my favorite quotes on preservation is by Richard Moe, the former president of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. I also think it's very fitting for the revitalization that our community is going through. There may have been a time when preservation was about saving an old house here or there, but that time is over. Preservation is in the business of saving communities and the values they embody.
Jeanie has often said that she really loves antiques, and that was the reason she married me initially. But, all kidding aside, Jeanie and I have been great mentors for each other during this last 10 years of trying to preserve and save buildings both downtown and in the residential district. But I know we got a full agenda, so let me say thank you, Mayor. Let me say thank you, Ron. And let me say thank you, City Council, on behalf of Jeanie and I.
Thank you, both of you, for all your hard work, everything you've done. And by the way, it wasn't McGillicuddy that really stopped me. It was the VT, and I just kept thinking, Valentine, Valentine. What's the T stand for? And I was blanking out. So what's the T?
Trent.
Trent, sorry, okay. And also, one of the things, hearing their backgrounds, both of them have done so much that we also figured if we gave one without the other, we could have had a family feud or something going on. So, but no, powerhouse family. So thank you, both of you, for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Richard Laurie here tonight? Richard? Republic Service Recognition Week. Okay, we'll come to that one next time. We now have Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month proclamation. Bill and Jean Keslov, if you could come up. And Sean Kroll. Whereas historic preservation is long and recognized as an important and positive public policy throughout the United States, our state, and our city. And whereas Rapid City has a longstanding commitment to the protection of its historic, prehistoric, and cultural resources. And whereas, since 1976, Rapid City Historic Preservation Commission has been faithfully and professionally committed to educating the public and conducting public events to promote the protection of our natural resources. And whereas historic preservation has resulted in enhancing the quality and character of our community and neighborhoods. And whereas, the value of history and historic preservation of our nation, our state, and our city is essential for our community to know and treasure. And whereas, the National Trust for Historic Preservation has designated May as Historic Preservation Month. And now we do hereby proclaim May 2013 as Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month and encourage the citizens of our city to see, save, and celebrate our city's history.
Each year, the Historic Preservation Commission selects residential and commercial properties for awards and preservation. Norm Nelson was a longtime commission member and also a very big preservationist in Rapid City, and this award is done each year in honor of him. So the Norm Nelson Historic Preservation Award, okay, has been given to two residences this year and to one commercial building this year. So... The first award for the Norm Nelson Preservation Achievement Award is granted to Adam and Leah Braun at 1101 11th Street, and they were unable to be here with us today. He's in California, and she's routing kids without a husband. So they were unable to be here, but told me to go ahead and accept it on their behalf. The second one for residents is given to Alexis Demersman and Jason Ward for Historic Preservation Excellence in the Rehabilitation of 1123 9th Street in Rapid City. Third is for a commercial building in downtown Rapid City, which everyone's very familiar with. But this year, it's going to be going to the Elks Building, who is in, Gunderson Palmer Nelson and Ashmore is in the building right now currently. And McCarthy Properties is the one that's owned it. And Steve McCarthy's done a lot of historic preservation throughout downtown. So the Norm Nelson Preservation Achievement Award for Commercial goes to the Elks Properties. Anyone here for that?
On behalf of the law firm of Gunderson Palmer, the names get too long, Ashmore and Nelson, Nelson and Ashmore, and on behalf of McCarthy Properties, it's just been a joy to be involved in that building. It's a cornerstone of town, and we have a wonderful tenant and an owner in the law firm that I think is going to take that building for another 50 years as a real landmark in town. We're really, all of us, very proud to be part of it. Thank you very much.
Curtis Price could come up, along with the other folks, for Public Service Recognition Week. Curtis, would you like to tell us a little bit about Public Service Recognition Week, and then I'll read the proclamation?
Certainly, thank you. The Public Employees Roundtable, which is an organization representing many public employees, county, federal, state, has set aside this week to recognize federal employees. And these times, it's easy to lose sight sometimes that we really depend on public employees. They keep our water safe, they protect us from the bad guys, they do lots of things. And so it's good to spend a week. We really appreciate the mayor helping us recognize public employees who make a lot of sacrifices and basically dedicate their careers to serving you.
Thank you, Curtis, and I'll read the proclamation. Whereas we are served every day by public servants, who are often the unsung heroes that do the work that keeps our nation, state, county, and city operating effectively. And whereas, public employees take not only jobs, but they take oaths. And whereas, many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives every day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. Whereas, public servants include teachers, doctors, nurses, scientists, train conductors, astronauts, safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and countless others who day in and day out provide the diverse services expected by the American people of their government with integrity and efficiency. And without these public servants at every level, stability would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders. Now therefore I, Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim May 5 through 11 of 2013 as Public Service Recognition Week. Thank you for your work on this. And we now have an executive proclamation for Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, and Charity Doyle has assisted in developing this proclamation, and she'll read it for us tonight.
We just like to get motorcycle season kicked off the right way, if you know what I mean. Whereas motorcycle has been an important part of recreation, transportation, and tourism in Rapid City and western South Dakota, and whereas the motorcycle has contributed to governmental activities nationally as well as locally, both in wartime and peacetime. And whereas motorcycle ownership has reached over 5 million in the United States today with 11,215 registered in Pennington County alone. And whereas, it is important that the citizens of Rapid City be aware of motorcycles on the highways and our streets and recognize the importance of sharing the roadway. And whereas motorists should have a special awareness of the vulnerability of a motorcyclist. And whereas education and safe riding habits are worthy of special recognition, and Rapid City is located in one of the four safest states for riding motorcycles in the United States. And whereas the month of May begins an annual renewal of motorcycle enthusiasm, now therefore I, Charity Doyle, on behalf of Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do proclaim May 2013 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month.
Thank you, everyone, and now we'll go to our city attorney regarding the executive session.
Thank you, Mayor. We would be having an executive session pursuant to STCL 125-2 subsections 1 and 3 involving personnel matters and pending our proposed litigation.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Roberts and a second by Doyle to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to come out of executive session. Motion by Doyle, second by Scott. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 4 is to provide direction to staff regarding the home owned by Jennifer Gru at 3213 Dover Street. Do we have a motion? Jerry Wright?
I make a motion to continue this item to the Public Works Meeting on May 28, and the staff is to meet with the owner and to bring back a recommendation to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Laurenti. Everyone understands the motions. It is being continued to the May 28 Public Works Meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now is the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda, actually not be taken regarding any issue not on the agenda except by placement by unanimous vote of the council members present. And we have one public comment, no, we have several. We'll first go to Julie Fry. Still here? Okay. I'll go to Mike Derby. Mr. Derby, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Mike Derby, 2735 Country Club Drive, Rapid City. I don't want to steal any thunder from Ben Snow and Economic Development. I noticed after I signed up that an update is on the agenda for the Williston Basin Petroleum Conference, but I just wanted to let you know, as a private citizen, that was up there last week in Regina, Saskatchewan, Canada, that I'm a commercial real estate broker, I'm licensed in North and South Dakota, and I have some business interests in the Bakken region, but I was pleasantly surprised to see the contingent from Rapid City, the mayor included, boots on the ground. There's two booths, GOED and Rapid City Economic Development. There's 10 or 12 folks from Rapid City. Ben will talk, I'm sure, talk more about it, but the mayor was out meeting and greeting, and we had a reception one night, and there was over 60 prospects there, as far as I could tell. And the mayor and I actually had the opportunity to pitch someone in their booth about Rapid City and to come to Rapid City. And it was a target-rich environment, as they say in the military. So I just wanted to give kudos to everybody that went up there. So, thank you, Mayor. Good job.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. And now we'll go to Emmett Reistroffer from Sioux Falls.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Emmett Reistroffer. And I just wanted to come today on behalf of roughly 5,000 citizens of Rapid City who have signed a petition to recall a member of this council. And I just want to say, I think by the next meeting, we will have successfully collected enough signatures in the interest of protecting the image of this fine community. And I want to be on public record stating that we just want a fair dialogue. There's been several incidents of some people getting awfully threatening or angry to some of these outstanding volunteers. And, you know, it's been few and far in between. However, I just want to be on public record and say that we are maintaining a high level of respect and politeness as we roam the community with our clipboards. And we hope people with differing opinions will at least be respectful and allow us the chance to get this up for a vote and let the citizens decide who is the best representative for that ward. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Emmett. And now we'll go to item number five, which is La Croix Links Report from YMCA. Roger Gallimore. Good evening.
Good evening. Roger Gallimore, Executive Director, YMCA of Rapid City, Mayor Quaker, members of the City Council. Pleasure to be here this evening and to thank you once again for the continued partnership between the city of Rapid City and the YMCA with the La Croix Links Golf Course. This partnership, as previous Finance Officer Jim Preston loved to say, this is a win-win partnership. It's a win for the city in that it reduced subsidy for the course by 75 percent. It is a win for the YMCA in that it created another venue with which we can accomplish our mission. And doing so is a chapter of the First Tee. And it is a win for the community through having an affordable and accessible course available for kids, families, adults, and elderly. A year ago, I came to the Public Works Committee and gave a report on the project. And so I'm here tonight to report on the success of the Y-on-Course Capital Campaign and Project. So just a quick run-through, this project accomplished these key objectives. The irrigation system was completely rebuilt and now includes state-of-the-art monitoring that allows for more even water distribution. We've gone from 96 to 121 sprinkler heads. And the flow rate and time for each sprinkler head is individually controlled via any internet connection. This means that the course will be watered more efficiently and effectively. A drainage system was installed that went from zero to 16 collection points. This eliminates the marshy spots that were prevalent between holes and in the low-lying spots. All the tee boxes were completely rebuilt, which eliminated the uneven surfaces, plus several tee boxes were added, which brought the total number of tee boxes from 19 to 23. This allowed for even greater play for people of all abilities. The number-two green was relocated to create a par four. The number-three tee box was relocated to help reduce errant balls from slicing off the course. Okay, judging by Richie's laughter, I'm guessing yours is one of them. Bunkers were installed on the number-two fairway by the number-two green and by the greens on number-six and eight. Seventy-four trees were planted. In short, this project makes better use of water, enhances the playability and accessibility of the course, and most importantly, effectively uses golf as a tool for building character in kids through the First Tee. The total cost of this project was $400,000. Of this, $180,000 came from the Wadsworth Foundation, $40,000 came through an in-kind gift for Mid-America Golf, $24,000 came from the 2012 Parks and Recreation Facility Partnership Fund, and the remaining $156,000 came through private donations secured by a dozen volunteer campaigners led by volunteer John Ostra. Finally, to celebrate the completion of this project, a ribbon-cutting ceremony will be held on Tuesday, June 11, 11:30 a.m. Mayor Quaker, members of the City Council, you are all invited to both attend and to participate in the ribbon-cutting ceremony as we celebrate the success of this wonderful project. And thank you again for your part in it.
Thank you, Roger. We have a motion to acknowledge item number five. We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Scott. Any discussion? Thank you very much. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number six is a 2020 Vision Strategic Plan Update from Jenny Nelson. Good evening, Jenny.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. First of all, I want to recognize that you're going to be getting some documents from Steve Dozier, who is the beautification chairman. And we are also going to have comments from Jeff Bigler. I actually have a slide. I'm not sure, Charlene said it was loaded. I'm not sure, is it? Is the slide on? Okay. Hi. Charlene told me there was a slide loaded. If there's not, I'll just, I only have five minutes, so I'm just going to go ahead and start talking. First of all, in your link, I invite you, in the agenda, to really take a look at some of the links that you have in your document electronically. But basically, I want to remind you who I am and what I'm here to do. We began a process of asking the citizens of Rapid City, what is it you want Rapid City to look like, and what do you want Rapid City to be? Out of that process, we developed five goals. And I'm going to read them to you, since they were going to be up ahead, and I'll make sure these are all on your linked documents. But the first goal was, by 2020, Rapid City will be recognized as a leader in attracting, expanding, and retaining diverse businesses that offer higher skilled positions and higher total compensation employment opportunities. This will be evidenced by growth that exceeds the national economic standards. The second goal, by 2020, Rapid City will develop and implement a beautification program, beginning with the appearance of its entrances and expanding to the overall community that embodies a consistent theme, which is welcoming, aesthetically pleasing, and pedestrian-friendly. Goal three, by 2020, Rapid City will be nationally recognized by industry trade measures as a premier hub for healthcare, education, entertainment, tourism, retirement, business, technology, agriculture, and transportation. Goal four, by 2020, Rapid City will develop an interconnected parks, art, recreation system that provides diverse opportunities for enjoyment and add to our family-friendly quality of life. And lastly, the fifth goal, by 2020, Rapid City will have in place an accessible, affordable, convenient, and safe transportation system that addresses community needs. Now, to me, these are very, very exciting goals, and my job today is to give you a progress report on those goals. So I want to start by saying progress continues to go on. And today, my understanding is Ben Snow is going to be presenting, is that correct, Ben? And so he will be giving you more information and in detail, particularly about Goals One and Goal Three. Well, it's not this one, but no problem. We can just show them all the different documents. But what I want to let you know is that the city originally had committees that were set up that were appointed by the mayor. As we moved along, we realized that particularly Goals One and Three were very, really well-suited to be taken over by the Rapid City Economic Development Foundation. And so that is what has happened, and you will have another report again tonight. Goal Two, again, I want to just let you know about Goal Two, that is the beautification goal. And that is a goal that I think we find there's some challenges. We're in a time of budget constraints. This is, again, the site that I invite you to go to, Black Hills Means Business. And this is going to let you know really up-to-date what is happening related to Goals One and Goals Three. As we look at Goal Two, I have invited Jeff Bigler to come forward to talk to you about some of the things that are happening currently related to beautification. I will tell you that what we have happening in terms of moving this goal along is, in my viewpoint, a higher level of collaboration between Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and the Beautification Committee. I want to please ask you, again, as I said it early, go ahead and look at those links, because what we have on those links is the beautification plan. You've been given a document that lists all the different groups that have an interest in our community in terms of achieving this goal, having different pieces of the pie. We're wanting to bring this all together so that we're all working in the same direction. And then lastly, Goals Four and Five, right now, have not been actively initiated. But that is something that we hope will happen in the near future. So I'm going to ask Jeff Bigler to come and tell you about some of the things that are happening with beautification. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jenny. Good evening. I think, starting off, it's important to recognize the importance of the Beautification Committee and all the hard work they've done in trying to forward this important issue of beautification and enhancement for all of the community of Rapid City. Their mission is to develop and implement beautification projects and policies, to discuss pertinent issues, and to encourage public and private beautification activities in Rapid City. And to that goal, one of their main focuses recently has been the development of the Rapid City Enhancement Program, which is a link that you have available to you. It's this document right here. And it is a document that lists and describes various enhancement projects and policies covering such areas as street lighting, overhead wires, billboards, sidewalks, and streetscape enhancements, parks and rec projects, and other enhancement issues. That document has been and will continue to be a very valuable tool as Parks and Recreation, Public Works go forward in planning their projects and in their long-term planning. And the enhancement elements that are identified in that document will be incorporated into future projects when possible and feasible. Also, this document, I believe, will serve as one of many that will be used as a reference as we begin development of the Rapid City Comprehensive Plan. So I think that these are all very valuable projects and philosophies, and I think that we will be able to continue to use them as we go forward with our planning operation. Some of the current and near-future enhancement projects that we have going on right now are some road projects, some streetscape enhancement projects, including Jackson Boulevard, West Omaha, Mount Rushmore Road, Kansas City Street, East Chicago, the I-190 Silver Street Interchange, and I-90 Exit 60 interchange, just to name a few. We also have parks projects that are going on that fit into this category, and those would be some memorial park improvements, including the Promenade, which is currently underway, the Parkview ASA Softball Facility landscaping upgrades, Vicky Powers Park landscaping upgrades, the Skyline Wilderness Area Trails and parking lots, which have been started and will continue for the next year or so, and some Canyon Lake Park lighting upgrades. Now, you can see that from the information that was just passed out to you, there are 37 groups, at least 37 groups, that have been identified, both public and private, including civic organizations, community and neighborhood groups, city departments, all of whom contribute to the overall beautification and enhancement of Rapid City. And this list illustrates the vast numbers of stakeholders that are out there and that are participating in trying to make our community more beautiful and livable. Now, the enhancement program is an ambitious endeavor that involves a number of different organizations, groups, stakeholders, and it will require some continued cooperation and communication among the city departments that are affected. And I'm confident that with the continued support of mayor and council, I will see some real progress going forward with these programs. So thank you. If you have any questions?
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion to acknowledge the report? Let's get our motion in our second. We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Scott. Go ahead.
I just want to close by making you aware of where the 2020 Vision Plan and the updates are on this front page. And so if we can just keep rolling down. Right there, if you want to just click on that, this is on the very first page of the Rapid City homepage. So if you have interest, this document is updated regularly. And so this is the update for people who may be interested in knowing more about the history of this plan and where it is currently. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to acknowledge. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. Item 6A is an update on the Williston Basin Petroleum Conference from the Rapid City Economic Development Partnership. I will recognize Ben Snow.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before I start, I first wanted to let Mr. Derby know that he did not steal any of my thunder, because we, as a community, have incredible collective thunder. And so the more, the merrier. And it was great to have such a great contingent up in southern Saskatchewan last week. I want to provide a little bit of context to this trip that we just made. Jenny mentioned a little bit about the 2020 goals for the city and how a couple of those goals are particularly suited for the Economic Development Partnership and our ongoing mission to grow the economy here in Rapid City and the larger Black Hills region, in particular, by focusing on industries where we have some competitive advantages and where we have demonstrated that we have added jobs that pay, on average, 40% higher than what our average wages are here. And I just want to recap the six industries that we have identified. Business services, with an average salary of $45,000. Finance and insurance, average $36,000. Extractive energy, $57,000. Metals manufacturing, $46,000. Small-scale food and beverage manufacturing is $53,000. And healthcare and life science is $51,000. These industries have added over 4,500 jobs in the last five years in our region and have had a wage impact of over $213 million. So these, in the spirit of high-value targets, are industries, we believe, are winners for this region. Now I want to focus on our efforts to reach out and market towards the energy sector as the highest paying of our top six industries. This year, we've begun a concerted effort in reaching out to the oil and gas industry to market Rapid City and the Black Hills as a servicing and supply chain hub to not just the Bakken, which I'll talk about in just a few minutes, but also the Powder River Basin to our west, and the Denver Basin, which is the Niobrara that comes up from our south. You can see from the graphic there, part of our collateral marketing materials that we took up to the conference last week, showing the outstanding proximity of Rapid City to these vast energy basins, all of which are experiencing activity right now. At the beginning of March, we headed a delegation of business and tourism officials to Houston, Texas. We've taken advantage of a relationship that we've hatched with Jackson Lewis, a national employment law firm, who is in the process of locating a Rapid City office on the second floor of Murphy's. And they have a lot of energy-related clients in their portfolio. The purpose of the Houston trip, which we were joined by Council President Peterson, and we're appreciative of that support, by the way, turned into a really large, successful joint mission between economic development and tourism, where we were able to reach out to leaders within the Houston business community, particularly the energy sector, and market Rapid City as a servicing hub for these energy basins. And we were excited also to bring our friends from tourism and air service. And we were excited also to bring our friends from tourism and air service so that we can amp up that direct flight from Rapid City to Houston in this summer, which will be our second summer of having that flight. Hopefully, we would like to turn that into a year-round flight, and the way we can do that is by generating more demand for air service and the business travelers is an obvious way to improve that flight outside of tourism. On March the 15th, I headed out to Minneapolis, Minnesota, where there was a Bakken Conference taking place, and was a speaker on our Economic Development Panel, where we had, again, the opportunity to pitch Rapid City in the Black Hills region as a servicing and supply chain hub for the Bakken. For the rest of my comments, I'd like to focus on our activities from last week. This was a trip that we made to Regina, Saskatchewan, as part of the 21st Annual Williston Basin Petroleum Conference. This is considered the granddaddy of these oil and gas conferences. With the most recent boom, there's been a lot of these conferences that have sprung up, but this one's been going on for quite some time, and it alternates between Canada and North Dakota. So next year, next spring, it will be held in Bismarck, and we plan to attend that conference as well. Before I go on any further, I'd like to recognize members of our Executive Committee who attended with us on this trip. We have Jeff Karzrude, Sean Gabb, Mayor Quaker. We also have Jim Skoll, who's not here, and we also have Steve Konzit, who's not here. And then our Vice President, Terry Haverley, was also able to attend. This trip was a multi-day trade show appearance. The Rapid City Economic Development Partnership attended this conference, not only to host a booth, but to be a platinum-level sponsor for this event. So we made a bit of a splash as our first foray into this conference, and it was full of exhibits, programs, lots of opportunities for people to learn more about what's going on in extractive energy, and the technology, in fracturing, and getting oil and gas out of the ground up in North Dakota. There were over 2,000 attendees at this conference, and, as mentioned previously, we had great support from the local group, but there was also support from the Governor's Office of Economic Development, who had a booth up at this conference as well. Before your couple of handouts, the one that you see on the big screen here, you should have a hard copy of this, but this is really our energy story. And a lot of people will look at Rapid City and the Black Hills as not being one of those pink areas shown by energy basins, but we think that that's okay, because we've got same-day access to all three of these energy basins. We have a unique opportunity to pitch a lifestyle that simply cannot be found at Ground Zero, where some of these energy booms are happening. A lot of the development happening there is great, the revenues are fine, but they're in a little bit of a game of playing catch-up with infrastructure. The demographic mix is not ideal. We do have an ideal demographic mix. We are caught up with our infrastructure. We have plenty of land that's affordable. We have plenty of labor that's affordable, and there's a huge opportunity for us to not get caught up on the fact that the boom is not happening here, but rather, position ourselves as the best alternative to service those energy basins and to provide some elements of the supply chain. Case in point, W.O. Plastics under construction, HDPE Pipe Manufacturing Plant, which will open up in Rapid City this summer. That company will save about two-thirds of its transportation costs, as opposed to making the pipe in one of their other plants and then having to ship it to their customers in that region. And then just to our north in Belfus, there's another similar operation that's under construction, again, for the same reasons. We also have some of our existing companies, like Adams ISC, True North Steel, who are fabricating tanks and are repairing parts and are providing tremendous service and are growing their workforce right here in Rapid City. So it's not just about the newcomers who are coming into town, but it's about our own companies who are taking advantage of this incredible opportunity. And that's to say nothing of the other engineering services, sand, gravel, cement, the list goes on and on, of companies in Rapid City who are taking advantage of the opportunity. Mr. Derby mentioned a little bit earlier about the opportunities to get involved with housing and real estate, both residential and commercial real estate. They're tremendous opportunities for companies in the Black Hills who have expertise in this and who are today working in the Bakken to use their skills to put them to work in that field. So really, I think the important thing, as you read this energy story and this pitch to the energy industry, is that we're ideally situated to do the servicing and supply chain. Now, if you look at, I think Terry might have passed this out, this is the Bakken Oil Report. This is a big publication that was distributed to all the people that attended this trade show last week. Of course, we advertised, half-page ad, and we also submitted some advertorial content, which is essentially that two-pager that I gave you, and they gave us some outstanding exposure in this magazine, added graphics, and was really a great commercial for Rapid City. And the circulation is in the thousands of this publication, so that's another opportunity We did hold a reception on Wednesday night of the conference. There were 87 confirmed attendees, and this was a great opportunity for us to joint-venture with the Governor's Office of Economic Development in having a social right in the middle of the conference, where we could invite some of the companies that we talked with during the show and before the show to come and get a little bit of a taste of how business could be for them, were they to relocate or expand in Rapid City and in South Dakota generally. And that was a highlight of our trip, as there were some excellent contacts made in that reception that we held. Also worthy of note is the familiarity and affinity that many companies have with the South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. We brought some stuff from the School of Mines that was part of our booth, and it was remarkable how many people were brought in and had recognized the logo from School of Mines and who had some connection to the School of Mines and Rapid City. And so those were all very positive. As we develop our plans for the conference next year, as I said, we will be attending in Bismarck, we're already strategizing on ways to make it better, more effective, invite more people, perhaps from the school itself. If they don't have their own booth, to have a more active role in the booth that we have. I think that will conclude my comments. I'm available for any questions if you have them. We're going to continue to work in reaching out to energy. There's a conference in Denver that I attended last year. I intend to attend that conference again in October, and just continue to work on these relationships. It's important to know that this is a multi-year campaign. This is not something where we go to a conference and come back and have 15 companies that are going to be locating in Rapid City, but rather, we have to nurture those relationships over many months and sometimes many years, until they're at a decision point and ready to make a move. Stand ready for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Ben? We have a motion to acknowledge and a second by Laurenti, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And Ben, just for clarification, when you say that this magazine that was passed around that had a two-page article on it introducing Rapid City to the circulation up there, you said it was 1,000, but just for clarification, what it was 1,000 of targeted participants that would be interested, correct?
Well, there were 1,800 people pre-registered, and historically, I talked to some of the people that organized the conference, they get a few hundred people that are walk-ins. So there was probably over 2,000 people that were attending the conference, and everybody had access to a copy of this report. They made extra copies because they distributed it to a wider network, but this is kind of the first opportunity to share it with the public.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ben. All right, we will now move on to public comment items for, public comment for items 7 through 70 and item 82. We will hear, we have a motion by Lewis and a second by Scott to open public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have several speaker request forms. We'll first go to Cale McNovo on item 38. Cale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Cale McNovo. I own Spurly Consulting, Ave. 21, Columbus Street, Rapid City. I represent the petitioner in this item. That is Gary Raspason, Walgar Development. Mr. Raspason has got the property located along Minnesota Street. If I can bring the correct map up, I'd just like to show you. Bear with me a second. I'd like to show you a map of Minnesota Street as it exists. Mr. Raspason is proposing to plant two lots in this location. This would be Fifth Street. This would be Highway 79 and Parkview Drive. Parkview Pool is located in this location. You see, Mr. Raspason's got two lots that we're bringing forward. They're relatively shallow lots, and our interest is in waiving the requirement to dedicate the pedestrian access easement. Minnesota Street exists in an 80-foot wide right-of-way. In green, it appears as sort of a greenish-yellow. You see the length of Minnesota Street here. That right-of-way is 80 feet wide. It's also 80 feet wide down near Highway 79. It narrows to 73 feet in the yellow, and is approximately 83 feet wide in the pink. Now, it's an arterial street, and what we brought forward at Public Works was that, as we've been planning along Minnesota Street, and Mr. Raspason did the initial dedication of the 80-foot wide right-of-way, when we brought forward the plant applications for this lot, this lot, this lot, we applied for variance to the dedication of both the right-of-way and the pedestrian access easement. At each case, planning commission agreed and supported our variance to waive that requirement to dedicate either the pedestrian access or the right-of-way, and in each case, the city council agreed with the planning commission's decision and waived that requirement. What is of interest is that we also brought forward a planning application for the lots on the north side of Minnesota Street. And in this location, a bike path exists on the north side. What Mr. Raspason has done, at the requirement of the planning commission and city council, is dedicate the pedestrian access easement on the north side of Minnesota Street. South side, consistently, they've waived the requirement. On the north side of Minnesota Street, where the bike path exists, consistently, the both planning commission and city council have required that pedestrian access easement to be dedicated. If I can clear this off of here. The reason it's critical to the development of the two lots in question is they're relatively narrow. If you drive them down Minnesota Street, you'll see that there's a large drainage ditch that exists. It limits the depth of available property along Minnesota Street, developed partially multi-family residential development. And our interest is to not dedicate that pedestrian access easement, because beyond the pedestrian access easement, you have to dedicate the 8-foot utility minor drainage easement. You have a large, major drainage easement behind you, and it just limits the usefulness of a lot. If I could leave you with one more thought, I see that I'm out of time, but if you looked at the entire arterial street with 12-foot lanes, five 12-foot lanes, you'd have 60-foot of pavement, you had the curb and gutter, you're at 66 feet. You put an 8-foot bike path on the north side, you're at 74 feet. A 5-foot curbside sidewalk on the south side, you're at 79 feet, and we have an 80-foot right-of-way right now. And with that, I thank you for your time, and I'd be available to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. We'll now move on to comments. We have three speaker request forms on item 67, and by the way, the recommendation will be to pull this item from consent calendar tonight and to take it to a council meeting in a month or two, and in the meantime, ask our Community Resources Department to look at how to proceed with implementing the senior assessment study. So we'll start with Patty Martenson on item 67. Patty, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. My name is Patty Martenson, and I've been involved in improving things for the senior citizens of Rapid Cities ever since I stent on city council. And I would like to encourage the council members to continue the discussion with us and with the other members of the community, and to make, because I think this is a golden opportunity to make Rapid City a lead destination for seniors, not only those who are currently living here, but who may consider to move to Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty, and now we'll go to Patrick O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. Patrick O'Leary, 944 St. Paul Court, private citizen. I just wanted to take this opportunity to commend Sandy Deagle and the Vukurevich Foundation for the work that they did, and committee members like Patty Martenson, Ben Snow, members from both senior centers here in town, Minnalisahahn and Canyon Lake. It was a two-year process to put this report, get this study done, and I urge the Council, and I'm glad to hear that you guys are, that it's been moved, so that some action will be taken, but urge you not to let it sit on the shelf, and I think it's, what's in that report, in that study, is a great opportunity for Rapid City, and thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, and we'll go to Lisi Brown, also on item 67.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and representatives of the Council. My name is Lisi Brown. I'm with South Dakota State University Extension. What do you traditionally think of when you think of extension? You think of agriculture. You think of master gardeners. You think of ranching. Well, since the reorganization, extension has changed, and they have moved to a regional service center model with specialists in given fields. I am the Gerontology Field Specialist with South Dakota State University Extension. Long story short, I know a lot about older adults, and I am letting you know that I am available in your community to assist you as you move forward with this plan and analyzing it and seeing where, what action should be taken. I also want to highlight that May is Older Americans Month. Since 1963, the administration on aging has been highlighting the vital members of the community that seniors are, and it's important for us to remember this as we move forward. And I just want to remind you that I'm available. I have business cards if you would like my contact information. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lisi. Would you now have any further speaker request forms on items 7 through 70 and 82? Do we have a motion to close public comment? We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Doyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on consent items 7 through 70. 82 will be voted on after items 7 through 70. Would anybody like to remove any of these items for separate consideration? We'll first go to Chad Lewis. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 38, please.
Item 38. Charity?
Item number 37, please.
Okay, we have 37 and 38. Ron Sasso?
Item 36, please.
Okay, item 36, 37, 38. Amanda Scott?
Item number 67.
Item 67. We have 36, 37, 38, and 67. Anything else? We have a motion to approve the balance of consent. We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Scott to approve items 7 through 70, with the exception of 36, 37, 38, and 67 will be pulled for separate consideration. Do you have your light on? Is that, no? Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 36, this is a Public Works item. Jerry Wright, please.
Item 36 is a request the mayor to authorize staff to prepare revisions to the City Municipal Code regarding the authority of the Public Works Director to execute development agreements for public improvements and acceptance of public improvements on the behalf of the city. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Wright, second by Doyle to approve item 36, and we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
I would like to make an amendment to the current motion, and the amendment would be to make, to keep the changes as is, with the exception of the final acceptance of infrastructure, that that would come before council.
Okay, we have an amendment. Do we have a second for Ron's amendment?
Second for discussion.
Okay, we have a second by Laurenti, and this is an amendment to the motion. This will be considered as an amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Amanda? Oh, I'm sorry. I had wrong.
Just, it's something that I think is, the changes, I think, are excellent, and at the same time, I think when we look at infrastructure and the importance of our infrastructure, we want to make sure that we want to make sure that what we're accepting is what was built, and I believe for transparency purposes, that would be in our best interest to have that come before the entire council.
Chad Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I direct a question to Brett Limbaugh? Brett, does this kind of muck up the idea we had before of kind of taking it to the, streamlining the process by adding this amendment?
You know, the, way the current development agreement is structured, the Public Works Director has the authority to perform the final acceptance for the council. So if the amendment were to go forward, that is different.
Okay, so basically, we've already gone through a huge revision to make this, take this out of the hands of us to keep it out of the politics and everything else, and put hands, put the trust of the staff that's been hired to do this, and now we want to bring us back into it, basically, essentially with this amendment? So I'm going to have to vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Amanda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. May I direct a question to Brett Limbaugh, please?
You may.
Brett, if you wouldn't mind clarifying with some examples on what would come before council versus what would be approved by the Public Works Director?
You know, and actually, that probably is a better question for Terry, as far as when they're performing the inspections out there, if they determine that the street wasn't correct and should be accepted, that he could probably give you some examples of what might occur.
Thank you, Brett. Terry, you're the expert.
Thank you. You know, as far as examples, I could name a few that have come through recently. I think the most current one that was presented to the council was one that was, that was over by the school district property over here. Actually, in that particular case, there was a particular specification that they didn't meet. It was in regard to compaction on the asphalt, but after staff reviewed it in more detail, had been in place for two years, we actually recommended to the council in that particular case that you guys go ahead and accept that infrastructure. Most of the infrastructure that comes before you, though, they have met all of the standards and conditions. Now, have they passed every test? No, not always. But when there's a failing test, they then come back and retest it after they've reworked the area. So, you know, I think staff's opinion is that, you know, if a developer and their contractors have met all of our specifications, there's really, there would be no reason for you guys not to approve the infrastructure. Now granted, if there's a particular condition or specification that they were not able to meet, in that particular case, I guess I could understand the council wanting a little more oversight, probably on our judgment, I guess.
And just for clarification, Terry, I thought that, those examples that you just gave, and thank you, I thought that is what was written into this, or what will be written into this, is that if any improvements meet the city specifications, then you, as staff, would go ahead and grant the approval. If there were any improvements that, for whatever reason, did not meet city specifications, however, as staff, you would recommend approval, those would come before city council in order for, to have council consideration.
I believe, well, I think Joel can probably answer that.
Go ahead, Joel.
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed this in a general review this morning, and what we had discussed, the agreement doesn't contemplate that, but there's some ordinance, I don't know if it's in this item or another item, where we asked for direction to bring the ordinance amendments necessary to carry this out and implement this agreement forward. What we had discussed is, including in the ordinance, reporting requirement for when surety was not, or was running out, or the improvements hadn't been completed within a certain period of time. And then what we also discussed is that for a general subdivision where all the specifications were met, that staff could issue the final acceptance. And, you know, the agreement contemplates that at the time the work's completed, you do the final inspection and it passes, all the punch list items have been done, the staff will issue a letter of acceptance, and that that is the beginning of the warranty period for the infrastructure. So if we had to delay it for a couple of weeks, would it be the end of the world? Maybe not, but to the developer, it's just one more step that they're going to have to go through, essentially. I don't know what purpose it really serves when all the specifications are met, because essentially, you look to staff and say, are the specifications met? Yep. Okay, approved. I don't know that it's necessary, but what Terry had discussed this morning at a general review is that when we do the ordinance that talks about bringing it forward, we could include language that would say if that, for some reason, not all the specifications were met, that then those would come to city council, and there would be an explanation of what was deficient, and then staff would give a recommendation on whether to accept it or not. But if all specifications were met, that staff could just accept it.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Mayor.
And we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion to pass this item as written in the record without the amendment.
The substitute motion would be out of order. In order to get to that motion, we have to defeat the amendment, and we couldn't get to that.
All right, I'll just go back to nothing.
Ron Sasso?
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, thank you, Joel. That is, my main concern is strictly if something is not built to specifications, if there are any deficiencies, that it would indeed come before the council, and just like we did have something come before us in this past month, however, that was prior to ordinance that required things to be built to specification. So I just think for transparency purposes, if anything is deficient, even if it has been potentially repaired, but there are deficiencies, if there are concerns, I think that needs to come forward. It's just, just from protecting the taxpayer dollars, I believe it's important. And there again, I'm only talking on the final acceptance if there's any deficiency. I'm not talking throughout the rest of the process.
And we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for Mr. Walter Storf, if I may.
Sure.
Terry, let me ask you a question. Would you be inclined to improve something were there deficiencies?
I think the example I just gave you previously on the asphalt that was installed that was below our compaction efforts, our minimum standards, in that particular case, we did recommend approval of it, so.
How often?
It doesn't happen very often.
And what kind of training would the council need to go through in order to understand specifications and be able to, by rights, be the final say on that, where staff had a very high level of comfort with that?
Well, majority, most of the council probably would not have the adequate background training for it. That's why you have staff, I think.
Agreed. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on the motion? Before we proceed to a vote, I just want to mention two things. I think the concerns that Ron has brought forward are valid, but I believe that they are addressed and will be addressed in the ordinance that's coming up. There's two scenarios that I can think of. One is the refusing to accept infrastructure and therefore, in a sense, accepting it by non-acceptance. That'd be, that'd be one situation that the ordinance would, would need to, would need to cover. And the other would, the other would be accepting it when it doesn't meet standards, and that would be another situation that the ordinance would be, the ordinance would need to address. So I think you're safe in removing your amendment, because I believe that these, these issues will be addressed in the process, and I don't think that our city attorney and our public works director, or any future city attorney and public works director, are going to put their careers and licenses on line by accepting infrastructure which doesn't meet a city ordinance, because under the ordinance, they would be, there would be accountability for that, and it would impact bonding and city official bonding and everything else. So I think that there are enough checks and balances that we can remove the extra added step of, of having an additional vote by the city council, as long as there is accountability built into the ordinances. And again, the ordinance will, there'll probably be multiple ordinances, and there will be two readings of each one, and it'll also come through committees as well. So, Ron?
I have no problems with withdrawing my amendment, as long as we're covered on anything that is substandard coming forward. That is my main concern.
Okay. Well, you'll have an opportunity, if it comes back forward and you, you don't believe it's being handled properly, you can offer an amendment at that time. Would you like to withdraw your amendment?
Yes, at this time.
And that's okay with the seconder? Okay, amendment has been withdrawn, we're back to the original motion. Any discussion on the original motion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 37, Jerry?
Item 37 is a request the mayor to authorize staff to do a feasibility study on the installation of sidewalks on both sides of Highway 44 from La Crosse Street to Western Dakota Technical Institute, and come back with a recommendation at the June 11th, 2013 Public Works Committee meeting, and I still move.
Motion by Wright, second by Roberts, and we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another question for Mr. Walter Storf, if I may.
Sure.
Terry, as a Public Works Director, I'm curious as to something. I did watch this video, and one thing I did not hear addressed is why the bus stop out at that, at Western Dakota Tech was removed from the route. Could you address that a little bit, please?
Terry? Good question. We actually started that route back in August when we added the Coolidge Route, and working with the administration out there at Western Dakota Tech, and we operated that up through April of this year. And when we were looking at doing some revisions to our route times, and we brought our drivers in, one of the questions we asked was, are we seeing much uses out to Western Dakota Tech? And across the board, it was unanimous, no. Nobody's, nobody's taking the bus out to Western Dakota, and, and everybody felt it was really not a good use of our, of our resources. So we had some additional conversations with the administration out there. They were in agreement that they would continue to take input from their students, and if there's a big enough need, we can look at special tripper buses out there at different times of the day, and we'll certainly accommodate them if the need's there, but there definitely is not the need right now. So in an effort to best utilize our resources, we pulled that section of the route out when we did our route adjustments in, in April.
Perfect. So we will be keeping a pulse on it? And, and so I thought I heard somebody on committee say that there were people getting dropped off at Omaha and, or at Campbell in Omaha, and walking to school? That's probably not happening then? Or do you have any numbers or data on that?
I don't have any numbers available for you on that, but our, our closest location would be the intersection of Omaha and Campbell.
Okay, and at this point, due to the, this issue getting aired last week, have you had any property owners contacting you about potentially being forced to put in sidewalks?
Not at this point that I'm aware of.
Okay. One last question. The cost of doing a feasibility, actually, twofold question. The cost of doing a feasibility study for this issue, as far as staff hours goes? Any ballpark?
We would probably put 20 hours into it, I would guess. It, because we're, the motion on the floor, I believe, is from La Crosse out there, so there's, there's quite a few properties involved. Some of them, wouldn't be a lot of grading work involved in getting sidewalks in, but there's a few of them, I think, in question that, that may be some issues.
And in your short time here, how often have you seen the council direct or instruct you to create a feasibility study that is then completely disregarded and the project voted down?
It's not unusual to happen. From a sidewalk standpoint, the last time, last two that we've dealt with were up on Red Dell Drive and a few of them down on Canyon Lake Drive. In those particular cases, the council did go ahead and order them in.
And we did have good communication with, with that process. My fear here is that we are putting the cart before the horse in doing the study. I think, you know, talking to the, the property owners, finding out, taking a poll, if you will, of the council, are we inclined to order in the sidewalks? I heard the primary issue was this bus issue, but if we're keeping a pulse on that, then is the feasibility study necessary? So I just have a lot of questions I don't want to rush into and then just have this body say, oh, thanks for your effort, but we're not going to do anything. Because again, staff hours are tax dollars, and that would be more money wasted, so I urge my colleagues to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Charity. Jerry Wright?
Rest of the Public Works Committee can chime in, but we did ask for it, and we did receive the master plan for pedestrian sidewalks and bike paths, and it was a part of it. And this, if I remember it, was a high priority route, was it not? Okay, so that was one of the bases for it. Thank you.
Ron Sasso? Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. And there again, I know when, when the bike and pedestrian master plan was developed, there wasn't a library out there at that location either, but I think when you look at overall, the bike and pedestrian master plan, our goal is to have as sidewalks in as many areas as possible. This is something that came up two years ago, as far as looking at sidewalks in that area. There are footpaths that are worn, and my original thought was from, from the bus stop to Western Dakota, and then through discussion through Public Works, it expanded to both sides and going a little further. So I think that it is worth looking into. As far as for the sidewalks, I think that's the direction, as a city, we should be going when we're looking at trying to get fit Rapid City and trying to, trying to have as many people, as many parts of our city accessible, I think is important.
John Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Terry, if you do this study, and we don't use it right now, say, two or three years in the future, we could still use that, that study that you're doing right now, correct?
Yeah, we could, we could adjust it for cost of inflation.
Yeah, cost of inflation. But if you do it now, it'll actually be cheaper for your staff to do it right now, even if we use it five years in the future, correct?
As far as the number of staff hours.
Staff hours and, and what your staff's being paid now compared to what they'll be paid five years in the future.
I would hope it's more in five years.
Because we know this is eventually going to come in. It may not come in next month, next week, next year, but it is a priority for the master plan. So we know eventually we're going to be using this. So I think it's a good idea that we do it, get it done now, and we have it for the future. Thank you.
Chad Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my biggest concern, I saw this, watching Public Works, was actually at Public Works, and the original motion was to order them in right away, and there was no consideration of notice of landowners or anybody else, and we didn't have any input, so I thought that was a little, little quick, and I'm just trying to figure out what the sudden rush to get them in now is, because as Alderwoman Doyle has pointed out, the bus stop's not being used. I've talked to Rich Segan about it, no one's using the one at Western Dakota Votech. I understand it's on the master plan, but I'm not sure it needs to be done right this moment, so I guess I, I do appreciate the fact that we are trying to get fit Rapid City, however, I think it's just a little, little quick for the landowners out there, kind of caught them by surprise. It's probably, we haven't heard much about it, because they haven't even gotten any notice yet, unless they're really bored and they're watching Public Works meetings, so thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Everyone understands the motion? Ron Sasso?
Just for clarification, that even if we are, typically, anytime we are looking at sidewalks, usually we are getting that automatically, the property owners are being mailed information, so that is something that, that's the normal process, just to clarify that, so.
Terry, just to clarify, the feasibility study, this is a pedestrian, really, what amounts to account, and this isn't, will there be notifications at this point? You'll bring back the study and then your recommendation?
What, what I understood the motion to be was a feasibility study, not the pedestrian count, but we'll, we'll put the cost estimate per property for installation of the sidewalk. And if you want a pedestrian count to go with it, it's going to take us a little more time to accomplish that.
Okay, the, so the motion, just to clarify the motion, the motion is for a cost estimate, and that will, will involve landowner notification that this is being considered?
No, it would not involve at that point. We'll, we'll put the cost estimate together. Normal procedure, at least in the past ones that we've done since I've been here, is if you want to look at going forward with it, then we would send a courtesy letter out to them notifying them that the Public Works Committee and the council are going to consider ordering them in, giving them an opportunity to come into that committee meeting, voice their concerns, they'll have the, the cost estimate in front of them, and then based on what you hear at that meeting, if you decide to go ahead with it, then at that point, you could order the sidewalks in. then at that point, you could order the sidewalks in.
Okay? Ron, you still have the floor. Okay, Amanda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. May I address Terry? Terry, so you said twenty hours of staff time? Is that just one person for twenty hours to do a feasibility study on the cost of installing sidewalks?
That's correct.
What would be the staff's time for a feasibility study on a pedestrian count? Rough estimate, I'm not going to hold your feet to the fire.
I would guess somewhere in that twenty-hour range. It might be less. I mean, I don't know how many days we would look at the pedestrian count out there. There's a couple of different ways we can do it. So, I might have to sit down with Dell Tech and John Less and get some estimates from them.
All right, thank you.
Jerry Wright?
Well, I supported the original motion for the feasibility, and I would assume that there'd be a little common sense spun into that, not only the cost estimate, but the terrain and also the adjoining land use. I mean, one portion on the north side is predominantly residential, south side is predominantly industrial. You know, I would appreciate if you also kick a little of that in and say, okay, we've got a lot of people, a lot of people walking to and from homes. That supports it, and the other side it may not. So, feasibility, I hope, is a little more than just cost, but it doesn't have to be any six-month transportation study. Okay?
Bill Clayton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may address Terry. Terry, one of the things that we did discuss in Public Works was the terrain on the south side of forty-four, in between Campbell and the school. And I did take a ride down that way this weekend, and as I mentioned, well, a detail that wasn't mentioned, there's about a ten-to-twelve-foot shoulder, I would guess. And then, from there, typically, the topography is almost straight down. So, in an effort to put a sidewalk there, there would have to be some building up of the terrain. And I think some of those properties are so close to the road, I don't know that there's room there. So, that'll come out certainly, I guess, in a feasibility study. But it may be, and Jerry, you just mentioned terrain, it might be that there are places, in fact, where a sidewalk just won't fit, without degrading the width of the shoulder. You know, as a bicycle rider, it's a nice place to ride, because if you ride forty-four, there's plenty of shoulder there. But then, once you get past that overpass, you're on your own, because now you're sharing the road with the vehicles, because there's not much there in terms of a shoulder going out towards the airport and beyond. So, I, I'm not really sure what a sidewalk is going to afford us on the south side of the road, where it would be more usable, I would think, on the north side.
I think you're correct there. The other thing that will come into the mix here, too, is it is a state highway, so anything that goes out there will have to meet the DOT standards. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no. Motion carries with one no from Chad Lewis. And we'll now go to item number thirty-eight. Jerry?
Item thirty-eight is to deny a request for an exception from Spurlock Consulting for a wall guard development corporation to not dedicate additional right-of-way or pedestrian and utility access easement to Minnesota Street. Propose lots one and two of Block Three of Minnesota Park subdivision in Section thirteen Township One North, Rain Seventies, Black Hills, Meridian, Rapid City, Pennsyl County, South Dakota. I still move.
Second.
So, your motion is to deny the request. Motion by Wright and a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion on the motion? Chad Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may have a question for the petitioner, please? Mr. Magnemo, if you could identify yourself again, I think.
Yes, it's Kale Magnemo, Spurlock Consulting, eight-twenty-one Columbus Street.
Did I do that right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Anyway, Mr. Magnemo, you were just trying to, as I get the gist of what you were trying to say earlier, is that by requiring this additional space, there's already space for a sidewalk there, is that correct?
Yes, right now. And what I was trying to convey to you is that this eighty-foot wide right-of-way will fit the five lanes. What it doesn't do is provide the boulevards. Now, when you extend an arterial street out into the country, it's nice to have the boulevards, you have someplace to put the fiber-optic lines and the gas lines and the other private utilities. In this case, Minnesota Street's existing, there, the gas and the fiber are already in.
So, you don't see, they're asking for an additional ten feet beyond that, correct?
That would be correct on the south side. On the north side, where we plotted, we dedicated it so that they had room for the bike path.
Okay, so, would it shrink your, would it kill your project completely to not get this through? Or does it shrink the scope of it, or how does that work?
What it does is it takes that half-acre lot that we're trying to plant, and it just carves off not only the ten feet of the pedestrian access easement, but essentially the eight foot of the utility easement that goes on the interior of that. It takes, essentially what you're doing is taking eighteen feet off the edge of the right-of-way.
But would this essentially kill your plans, your project?
Yeah, you know, I think that there's maybe still a use for the property, but it's significantly diminished because of the ability to gain access to it and create a parking lot and have some residential.
Is it zoned MDR?
It's in a PRD right now. The idea is to put, yes, apartment complex on it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Bill Clayton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could address, I think, probably most appropriately to Terry. Kale, when he was speaking, took us down Minnesota. And in some places, if I understood correctly, and it's twice I've heard it, and I'm still not sure I really have a handle on this, but we, towards the west end, we have eighty feet, and then it tapers to seventy-three. Then there's a portion where it's eighty-three, and then seventy-three again, and then eighty. So, if we enforce having this width down in the area where he's talking about, how is that affected by those two narrower spots that are currently seventy-three? Are we going to have to do something later on to widen those so that it's uniform all the way down Minnesota?
Again, I think what we're looking at is not a current project, but one that's probably long-term in the future. And what will happen with those narrower lots, if they aren't redeveloped between now and that future date, is we would be acquiring the right-of-way, and we'd be paying for it. And we do that very, very commonly on our reconstruction projects of our arterial roads, where we go in and we're widening to five lanes, trying to meet our design standards. That's the point when we're in, trying to acquire right-of-way, and it can be very burdensome.
So, if I understand correctly, it's better to do it now than to wait until later, and it just exacerbates the situation?
Yeah, our recommendation is get it now while it's free, or you're going to pay for it later.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Everyone understands the motion on item thirty-eight? All in favor of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Sasso? Clayton? Nordstrom? Scott? Doyle? Lewis? Roberts? Wright? Laurenti? Motion passes five to two.
Thank you. We are now on item sixty-seven. Amanda, can you read this in the record for us? Item sixty-seven?
To acknowledge the report by Sandy Deagle on findings of the Rapid City Senior Need Assessment and Service Gap Analysis, and to release the report to the public, and I'd like to make a friendly amendment to also request the mayor to authorize staff to review and recommend city-sponsored action items at the legal and finance meeting dated July tenth, two thousand and thirteen. If I can get a second?
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Lewis. And just so everyone knows, the report has been released, and it is linked to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. And the main reason for the addition is, as the audience even expressed tonight, with the service providers as well as some of our seniors, we, as a city council, I think we have a lot of support up here to keep this in forefront and in front of us, and to make sure that the city can do what the city public services can provide for our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-two, Amanda?
Authorize mayor and finance officer to sign the contract between the city of Rapid City and the Fraternal Order of Police, South Dakota Lodge Number Two A for the period of January first, two thousand and fourteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Nordstrom, and there will be one abstention from Charity Doyle, and we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to be the first politician to jump in on this one. Just want to say, this was, when the staff had us write down our goals, finance for the year, it was what our top five ideas for the budget were. I put, this is number one, not just the police, but the fire department and all the other employees as well. We still think it's very important, and this is something that needs to be out to the public as well. When they see that we're giving raises and whatnot, they need to understand how much this is actually a cost savings for our community. It's cheap money now. It helps us recruit and retain our good employees, maintain a quality fire department and police departments, and keep good, quality public employees for you. So, please understand that when you see this raise going through, that this is net benefit to you. It costs us eighty to a hundred thousand dollars every time we lose one of these skilled professionals, and they're going off to other places, folks that, you know, I certainly wouldn't go to, but they're getting paid more money to go there. So, we're kind of, we've got to keep ourselves from being a training ground for other communities. And I think it's cheap money in the long run, and anybody who has a business, it's better to pay an employee now, when you have a good employee and keep them, than try to train new ones. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Ron Sasso?
I just want to echo a lot of what Chad said, and I think something that, you know, things that everybody on this council believes that, one, and there again, not just one unit, union, but we do have the best police force, the best firefighters. We really do have the best employees. And as a good example, last year, we added four police officers, and there was difficulty with getting enough applicants, because the salary isn't there. So, this is a huge step in the right direction, and fully, fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Jerry Wright?
We also have the best Public Works and library employees. Thank you.
Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to just say exactly the same thing. Thank you, Jerry, for bringing that up and reminding everyone about that. Thank you. I'll reel the floor.
Any further discussion? Motion is to approve item eighty-two. I want to just take a moment before we proceed to the vote to join in on all of the echoes and thank everyone for their leadership in moving this process forward. And there's someone who's not here tonight, who was very instrumental, and that's Tamara Peer, who was a former, who was a city attorney a number of years ago, and then was acting city attorney, or interim city attorney in the fall of two thousand and eleven. And she was the one that helped move this process forward, and involved many other people. Pauline Assumption, Chief Allender, Chief Maltever, and a number of other people. And Jeff Barbeer is, did your son win tonight, the ballgame?
We lost thirteen to twelve.
Lost thirteen to twelve, close game. Well, but we want to thank Jeff Barbeer and Human Resources for his tremendous efforts as well. And I want to thank the council members for their involvement in this process, and thank all of you for your patience in this long meeting tonight. So, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm going to call for a ten-minute recess. Any objections? Okay, we'll see you at five after nine. We're going to reconvene shortly. If council members could please take their seats. We'll start off with public comment for items seventy-one through ninety-seven, with the exception of eighty-two. We have a motion by Scott and a second by Nordstrom to open for public comment. I do not have any speaker request forms for these items. Tracy, would you like to speak? Tracy Heich?
I'd like to answer any questions that you may have regarding the ordinance before you tonight. To just kind of clean up some of the language relating to surplus items at the Civic Center. We believe we're in compliance with these things, but this just helps us to clean the language up a little bit and ensure that we are on the right track. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. We do not have any additional speaker request forms? We have a motion to close public comment by Scott and a second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-one?
Second reading, ordinance number five-nine-two-five, an ordinance repealing bicycle registration requirements by amending Chapter ten-point-six-four of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Clayton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Second reading, ordinance number five-nine-two-seven, an ordinance to codify the terms of office of department directors by adding Section two-point-zero-four-point-zero-two-five to the Rapid City Municipal Code. Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Amanda Scott, second by John Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-three?
First reading, ordinance number five-nine-two-six, an ordinance amending Section seventeen-point-zero-six of Chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the within-described property is requested by Bradley H. Estes for M. Hill Business Plaza, for a rezoning from light industrial district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located at fourteen-oh-one West Omaha Street. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-four?
First reading, ordinance number five-nine-one-seven, supplemental appropriation number two for two thousand and thirteen. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Amanda Scott, second by Steve Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-five?
First reading, ordinance number five-nine-three-zero, an ordinance to delegate to the Rapid City Regional Airport Board the power to declare certain property as surplus by amending Section two-point-seven-two-point-zero-seven-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-six?
First reading, ordinance number five-nine-three-one, an ordinance to delegate to the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center Board the power to declare certain property as surplus by amending Section two-point-seven-six-point-zero-eight-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-seven?
First reading, ordinance number five-nine-two-eight, an ordinance to amend the deadline to obtain contractor licenses by amending Section fifteen-point-zero-four-point-one-four-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number five-nine-two-nine, an ordinance to codify the term of office of the mayor's executive assistant by amending Section two-point-one-two-point-zero-seven-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-nine?
A request by Davis Engineering Incorporated for a
A request by Davis Engineering Incorporated for estate of Arlene Murphy, Dennis Murphy, personal representative for a preliminary subdivision plat for property generally described as being located south of Longview Road between Reservoir Road and Remington Road. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
We have a motion by Scott, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 80.
A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for a preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located at the corner of East Mall Drive and North Elk Vale Road. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Scott, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Preliminary approval of the 2013-2017 Consolidated Plan and the Fiscal Year 2013 Annual Action Plan. I make a motion to continue this item to the next Legal and Finance Committee meeting on May 15, 2013.
Motion by Scott, second by Doyle to continue item 81 to the next Legal and Finance meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 82 is taken care of. 83.
Authorize mayor and finance officer to sign amended contract for construction of public improvements through private developer Tax Increment District Number 69 between the City and the North Street Fire Station LLC. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no from Steve Larente. I should have predicted that. All right. Any? Item 84.
Authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the City of Rapid City and Black Hills Works for custodial services for parks and recreation facilities. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Roberts. And we will have one abstention from Ron Sasso, who's actually not in the room right now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and please note the abstention or absence of Ron Sasso from the vote. We are now on bids. Pauline.
First item for bid is the East Indiana and Laurel Water Main Reconstruction Project. The city received four bids on this project, and the recommendation is to award to Hills Materials Company in the amount of $225,964.90.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Lewis for approval for this much-needed project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 86.
86 is for the East North Street Utility Reconstruction Project, Horn Street to Pine Street. We received four bids on this. Recommendation is to award the utility bid only to Upper Plains Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $1,012,272.64.
We have a motion by Roberts and a second by Larente. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alcohol beverage license applications, 87 through 95. Pauline, do any of these need to be separately pulled? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the whole group? We have a motion by Scott, second by Roberts to approve 87 through 95. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 96, Get Fit Rapid City. Chad Lewis. Chad, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody for sticking around. You know, I was looking at some family photos the other day, and I was trying to figure out who this guy my wife was hanging out with, and I realized that person was me only about 50 pounds ago. So, you know, I've had some friends who've recently had some health issues, and people I really respect that have young children that have passed away. And I figured, you know what, it's time to get back into shape. Well, I'm up here in the council, and we're supposed to be sort of positive role models whenever we can. Obviously, we don't succeed all the time, but I think it's not a bad idea. I wanted to create something that maybe would help inspire other people in the community to get out and start, you know, get back into shape and live a little healthier lifestyle. So I figured, why not do it? I'd create something that we could all use as a free resource for the community. And so I went out and created a Facebook page and a Twitter account. And it's Get Fit Rapid City on Facebook. It's a Facebook page. You can go there and you can like it. You can follow it on a GetFit.RC Twitter account. And what it is, is it's just going to be a resource for the community itself, as a place for you to go, and you can talk about your own personal journey towards fitness or what your goals are and how you're going to do that. You can share diet plans, nutritional information that you have, that you know about. Maybe perhaps there'll be, you know, if you own a gym and you have a specialty running that week and you want to put it up there, go for it. Anything that promotes a healthy lifestyle. I'd just like to see that out there, like encourage the community to get out and, you know, to get involved and to just get a little bit, a little healthier lifestyle and a little better for everybody out there, to improve your quality of life, improve the quality of life for your children, your family, and everything else. As Alderman Peterson said, when Chad goes on a diet, he wants everybody else to go with him. So, hey, it's fun, you know, it's better to have a little support out there. It's just kind of a support place you could go. The idea would have to be some, you know, maybe some flash mobs occasionally. But, you know, we're going to go for a walk today at Sioux Park, bring your family. We're going to go walk from Sioux Park to the Jump Park or whatever. I'm going to try to do some things like that. But the best thing is it's free, and it's not going to cost you a dime. So you can go there, log on, and if you're one of the billion people that have a Facebook account, you can do that. And hopefully, you'll, you know, join us and give us feedback, and please, by all means, use this opportunity to inspire yourself, inspire others, to just live a little better life. Thank you.
A motion to acknowledge by Charity Doyle and a second by John Roberts. Any discussion? We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. Chad, I'd like to invite you to our pioneering for healthy communities as well. It's a group that's got the same goals in mind that you do. It's a committee that's in place, and we'd like to invite you, and maybe we can do some cooperative things and efforts through your group and the YMCA group that's doing this as well.
Like I said, it's, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I jumped on. Okay. Like I said, you know, this is just one of those things that I definitely, you can post that information up here. It's just for the generation doesn't like to really be joining anything, but they want to have the information out there, they want to be able to have a place to go. So by all means, more the merrier. I just want to see it, you know, something good for the community and something positive we can all work on together. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was that a no? Oh, okay. All right. How was you named? Item 97, this is fiscal year 2012 annual report update, and we'll go to Pauline. Recommendations to continue?
Yes, please, for two weeks.
Okay. I have a motion by Doyle and a second by Larente to continue to the next city council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on items 98 through 102. We have a motion to open public comment. Motion by Doyle, second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We don't have any public comment. We have a motion to close public comment. Motion by Lewis and a second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to approve items 98, 99. By Doyle, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Oh, these are the two alcohol licenses, Cat Mandu Bistro and Cat Mandu Bistro, wine license and a malt beverage license. We're now on items 100 through 102. Would anybody like to remove any of these items for separate consideration? Otherwise, we have a motion to approve all three items. Motion by Wright, second by Larente to approve. Oh, you're right, we have to read them individually. I apologize. Okay, item 100.